3,288.
That's true. That's true. I'm surprised nobody has been here.
This one, they're 3,248 possible. I mean, you can get about that many speakers.
Well, you see them. I mean, you see them going, and guess who they be? They going to work.
I'd like to call to order the November 14th, 2022 special call meeting of Mayor and Council, made necessary by Nicole's arrival this past Thursday. I'd like to call on Tim Carroll, our Councilman, to lead us in prayer and then please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, first thank you so much for all the blessings that you have given us and continue to provide to this wonderful city and its citizens. In this month of thankfulness, we are thankful for all that you do for each and every one of us. We ask for your continued blessings. We ask for your calm hand to be on this meeting so that we as council members representing the citizens that we do a good job on their behalf. We ask all this in your son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Going to begin with awards and presentations, the consideration of the November Employee of the Month. If Leroy Paulo and Bradley Iyer would join me at the front, please.
Leroy Paulo, Central Maintenance Supervisor with the Utilities Department Excelz is the master technician and supervisor. The latest example of Leroy's knowledge and expertise was evident during his installation of a new Influent bar screen for the city of Valdosta with the Kuchi wastewater treatment plant. This was an extremely challenging project requiring removal of the old bar screen system, modifying the mounting system for the new machinery, and working closely with local electrical contractor for the new electrical wiring and controls. The complexity and cost of $525,000 for this project normally requires contracting to a specialized firm. Leroy consulted with the equipment manufacturer, evaluated the project requirements, and then designed, planned, and managed the entire project. Accomplishing this in-house saved the city of Valdosta tens of thousands of dollars. Mr. Paulo has been employed with the city since 2006, 2007, I'm sorry, and he's been a great asset to the city.
Thank you.
Your office, your home, wherever you choose to hang it. This is for you as well. Don't get a bar of our thanks. We just cut down some of the money you save. And good day will go on this plaque to hang here at City Hall forever for people to see the excellence that you exhibit every day.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Barb, I mean Mayor Madison, is that his wife over there?
You don't want to come up?
Okay, I didn't give him a wire.
Thank you.
All right, Council's had time. We'll move on to item three. Excuse me. Council's had time to review the minutes from the October 20th regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none. Those minutes are approved by acclamation. Move on to item four, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of a resolution for an amendment to the city of Valdosta Deferred Compensation Plan. Chuck Thinkens, our fantastic Finance Director, to present. Hi Chuck.
Hey Mayor. Thank you. As the mayor said, this is an amendment of the Deferred Compensation Plan. As we discussed at the work session, the CARES Act provided relief on certain distribution requirements. This amendment simply codifies those so that we stay in compliance with the Internal Revenue Code and don't get in trouble with the IRS. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Chuck?
With the printout that you gave us?
That's for R.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'm moving too fast. I don't have any questions, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the recommended modifications to the city's 457 Deferred Compensation Plan.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further comments? Saying none. All in favor, show of hands. Council, thank you. Unanimous. Item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. Consideration of our request to approve amendment number two to the master terms and conditions for Vila Transit Service for the purpose of selling advertising and also helping us defer our costs. Richard Hardy to present.
Good evening, Mayor Council. As the mayor stated, this is a amendment to the master terms condition for Vila Transit for the purpose of advertisement. As you're aware, each fiscal year, the city is required to apply and request funding for our transit system. After the appropriate federal shares established, the city of Valdosta must provide its local match, the net project cost, and must document its grant application, the source and the source of the local match. As the city continues to fund and look for ways to offset required matching funding, the FTA has allowed the local match to be collected from revenues from the operation of a public transportation service such as the sale of advertising. Vila will collect the revenue by entering internal advertisement partnership. All advertising will comply with the Vila Valdosta Rightsure Advertising Guidance as outlined in the attached amendment. Some of the examples of advertising options include, but are not limited to, rooftop screens, in-vehicle screens, and vehicle wraps. Additional advertising options may be selected by Vila subject to Valdosta's prior written consent. Vila will deduct a 35% management fee from the advertising revenue collected. Staff recommends Council approve amendment as stated. Prepare to any questions. Counsel, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? All right. Richard, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I reckon I'll do this one as well. Make a motion to reprove the request as presented.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Unanimous. Move on to item B, consideration of bids for the construction of the new pickleball courts at Mackey Park. Mark Barber, our city manager, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed in quite a lot of detail last Tuesday evening about this agenda item, but just to, this has been about a week now, I'll repeat just a little bit of that history. As you remember, last year, we were making progress on finding a location for pickleball courts as a request from the Vila PRA and request to Vila PRA from our large pickleball association here that we have in our community. If you remember, we had started looking at the grassy area at Mackey Park that abuts Roosevelt. Yeah, Roosevelt. And the adjacent neighborhood really went up in arms. We placed a sign there to try to show everybody. They destroyed the sign. So at that point in time, the Vila PRA Facilities Committee began to look for another location. They looked out at Freedom Park, they looked at other locations, and came back to Mackey Park. But this time, it's the Burton Street side of Mackey Park, on the backside, where the playground equipment will remain up in the front area there with the, by the tennis courts. All of that will stay the same. What we're looking at is on that backside of the Mackey Park, the, there'll be a new bathroom facility, and you enter actually the parking lot to the courts from Oak Street. If you remember last time when we were looking at the other side, yeah, there it is. Thank you, Teresa. You'll see, you'll enter there. The other side of the, on Roosevelt, we were just going to make angled parking spaces. But now with this location, it necessitates a parking lot. So, the Parks and Rec opened bids on September 22nd of this year, and the base bid from William Powell, which is the lowest bid and the most responsive bid, the base includes the 12 courts, a new restroom building, a new picnic shelter, making appropriate land, land preparation for the courts, the parking lot we just spoke about that should enter from Oak Street, and landscaping. So that's what's in the base bid of $1,658,000. That's what is in that amount. We also asked them to do, give us some alternative bids, one being a seating area very similar to what the tennis courts have now. We can't afford that. So that was $750,000 additional to the $1,600,000. So, what George Page and I talked about at that point in time with Vila PRA staff is to go ahead and lay the appropriate foundation for a seating area like this sometime in the future. But for now, we'll lay the concrete base appropriately and then use bleachers for the seating area. Another alternative was another bridge. We've got the bridge further up in Mackey Park to, but this would be more coming from Roosevelt across the creek to the pickleball court area. That would have been additional $200,000. So, at this point, since we're expending more funding now to make a parking lot, we're going to forego a bridge at this time as well. So again, the base bid is $1,658,000 for all of the items I just mentioned. Now there's also a possibility we'll have to purchase $21,000 in wetland credits. We have a bank here at the city we might be able to use, but right now, part of, part of what the contractor put in was $21,000 for his company to have to purchase wetland credits because the creek will be, it's going to be close to that creek, and there's going to be some credits that have to be purchased. And also, there's a $25,000 deduct just for goodwill from the contractor from, from that base bid. So, with all that being said, the base bid, like I said, is $1,658,000. Then you take into consideration the $25,000 deduction, and if we have, if they have to purchase the wetland credits, that gets it to $1,654,000. But as with all bids, you know, we add a 10% contingency in there for the unknown, especially with as much land preparation and clearing that's going to have to take place for this to happen. So, that brings the bid to $1,819,400. Last year at this same point in time, comparing apples to apples, it's about a $700,000 increase from what Jeff Lovell did last year as an estimate for us to look at when we began the process to the actual, to the actual response from a vendor. It's about $710,000 more. Now, let me say this as well. This does not include lighting. Lighting was something separate. So, estimate is $135,000 to $185,000 for lighting. I can't stretch this anymore to include lighting. We thought we would have some help with that. I found out before I got up here that we're not going to receive that, that help. So, with all that being said, this does not leave lighting for this. And, you know, you're going to play, not telling you going to have lighting, but I, I'm not comfortable stretching this any further because as we discussed Tuesday evening, when we did SPOLOs, hey, we did not have a line item called pickleball at that point in time. But I, I'm comfortable putting this funding together for some, some things that we've been under budget on and the total of the parking rep budget. But, so, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Again, it's $1,819,400 would be what we would be asking for with that 10% contingency, but it does not include lighting at this time.
The 1.8 includes the 10%, right?
Yes. 1.8 includes, I went ahead and just said it all for you so you know. That's the total that would be, that we're requesting. If you choose to move forward with, with this agenda item, it's $1,819,400.
Counsel, any further questions?
Yeah, just as a note of interest, on the pad that we're pouring for the seating in the future, is that, was that the end of that diagram? It's a black and white diagram?
Yeah, it'll be here down. Right in there.
On the right side?
Right in there, yes. Going down, Teresa, somebody's looking at us. Yeah. Because all the rest of that up there, and Ms., Counsel, one, Cody, you had a question the other Tuesday evening. That's the playground equipment, that's all up there. That all remains the same. None of that goes away.
And where's the, the new bathroom facility there?
It's going to be right up, right there.
To the right there?
That building right there.
Okay.
So the bathroom is already, we going to move it further?
We're going to demolish that and build a brand new bathroom with touchless.
The one that's up there already to the left hand side?
Yeah, but we're going, yeah, that's not the one we have. The new one will be touchless like we do it, but that's it right there.
And where's the new pavilion going to be?
The new picnic pavilion?
The ride of the playground?
Go up some, yeah. And I don't think it's, I think we put it down here. Teresa, if you can go up or down whichever way.
But now that's all part of this price, right, Mark?
Yes, parking.
Parking, pavilion, bathrooms, all that.
The landscaping, right now, it's, it's.
Taking trees down, all.
Yep. And again, as we discussed Tuesday, I think the $700,000 increase, of course, as we all know, materials are more. We experienced that with all of our projects. But I think a lot of it is, we were, the city was going to be able to do some in-kind projects when it was over on Roosevelt. Because we, our engineering department can build the angled parking. We can build a parking lot. And there was no trees to remove on that side. And now we've got to remove all the trees, and I think that's, that combination of those two accounts for the $700,000, $710,000 increase from this time last year.
So the mothers that bring their kids out to the park, they got to walk on the opposite side of the pickleball court, make their kids to the restroom?
No ma'am. They'll, they'll park at those angled parks, Mare Pro Two, those angled parks now in Burton, and the playground, Teresa, go to the playground, yeah. The playground's equipment, that's Burton right back there behind that dark black line at the top. They'll still park there and go to the playground there.
So nothing changes for them?
Well, the only thing that's going to change, and I think, you know, we've got to be ready for some complaints, is when they, when the pickleball courts are full and that parking lot's full and they have a tournament, and we, and those parking spaces on Burton are filled because we're having a tournament, we might get complaints about parking.
Well, we run into that with tennis.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. We get that, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we fill up both sides, yeah.
Yeah, they use, they use offices across, they use Valdosta Middle School.
Yeah, we, we utilize both.
So your pickleball community got very creative with their parking. They had about 100 and, close to 120 participants. Yeah, that's. So they utilized the pickup lane over at the middle school, they utilized the doctor's offices. I saw people crossing the street and obviously filled up. There, there it is right there. That was the, that was the tournament.
Well, I know it's for Republicans. I saw on the news last night about somewhere else they would do a pickleball tournament.
And the tags reflected 12 counties, all the way from Cobb and Fulton to three different states. Florida, Georgia, and I actually identified a factor, one of them, I believe Iowa or somebody was there playing as well.
Well, at some point in time, we might want to consider looking at this piece of city street, Burton, and determine whether or not we want to close it and reconfigure it. Because you could definitely increase some additional parking spaces if we were to do that.
And the school's another option, too. If we could sit down with them, because they, they have a lot of wasted space over there to the right of the, the track.
One, one other question, though. Since we're not going to be putting lighting in at this time, is there any infrastructure work that would be good to have done while we build this and have it in place for, at such time that we can put in lights?
Well, here's, I hear what you're saying. I'm hope, I'm hoping we're going to, you know, if you guys approve this this evening, that we're going to find $135,000 to $185,000 from somebody putting lights, because we've got to. Would be my number one thing. To me, I don't really want to move forward without lights.
Well, I do know that whenever I was at the Vila PRA initial meeting, I guess about a year ago, when the plans were being presented by Lovell, some of the folks that came out to support it had discussed about possibly helping raise funds to sort of put towards this. So maybe they'll help us out. Since we're doing 1.8, they can come up.
That's right. So I don't want to present that it was null and void of not getting it. But like I said, Lounes County said they can't afford to do that at this point in time. So I think we can find Parking Recreation Authority, we can look to them for some funding. We can look to the pickleball community for, to help us find funding. But if we don't, I just, you know, we will do whatever infrastructure, like for the seating, whatever thing, anything we can do like that to prepare for it while we're in that, in that construction mode, we will do so.
Okay, all right.
I understand all of that, but I just feel that if Lounes County can't meet us halfway, the city shouldn't have to do all of that themselves.
Well, we, well, when it came to Hayhauer Soccer Complex, we didn't, we didn't have anything to do with that.
Hayhauer?
When it came to the soccer complex, correct? Mark, is that correct? The soccer complex and Hayhauer. That was a Lounes County funded...
As far as I know, that was a little before my time, but as far as I know, we did not participate financially because it was in.
It was in the county.
In Hayhauer.
Yeah, it was in the county.
And I'm not.
They got to stop baiting, doing everything for Lounes County to go off with not putting anything in and the city doing it all. I mean, I'm not against what you're saying, but Lounes County need to come up. Some of me doesn't have weight, so.
With that, Counsel Warren, but at the same time, we have a lot of hotels and restaurants that will be utilized by these people who come to the.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the lighting part.
Oh, yeah, and I agree. And I agree with that.
Of course, everything, yes, I'm great, but that lighting, Lounes County, go, go have to meet us somewhere in this.
We'll, we'll continue those discussions with them. See if they can't, they can't find it. My guesstimate for this tournament, it was two days. It started at nine o'clock both days, on Saturday and on Sunday. They also had a player party at Woodstock that night, so I would guesstimate the economic, economic impact to be about a $100,000 on that one tournament in that one weekend as well. That's.
Probably a little poor.
Yeah. Again, that's a conservative guess. They, they have formulas for this stuff as well. Not bad. All right, any further questions for Mark?
All right, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the bid as stated of 1.8, or basically $1,819,400, or 819,400. That includes the 10% contingency and everything else that we discussed.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further comments?
So if the contingency's not used, could we use a lot of that for lighting?
We could, but that usually happens at the end of the project.
I understand.
So, we're going, we're going, if this passes, we're going to find the money from other organizations to, to do this.
Good thought. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition? Motion passes. Congratulations.
We could, but that usually happens at the end of the project.
I understand.
So, we're going, we're going, if this passes, we're going to find the money from other organizations to, to do this.
Good thought. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. All in opposition? Motion passes. Congratulations. Might have to turn your cars to the parking lot.
We know who the pickle people are.
You all were the pickle people out there. Why y'all didn't come up and say nothing?
Well, most of, it's not a public hearing. Most of them were in that picture that I, that I had up there.
You should have pointed them out. No wonder you all were sitting out there cheering on.
All right. Thank you all. Item six, local funding and request. Consideration of our request to approve the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Small Business Grant Program allocation. Chuck Thinkens, our Finance Director, to present again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed at the work session, the city had originally allocated a million dollars for this. Subsequently, due to the response that was received, there was a quest for additional funding. Council committed an additional million dollars to this. So we had a total allocation of $2 million. As we had also discussed, the original priority was divided into four, what we're calling buckets. Those that were in the QCT and were owned minority, veteran, or woman status. Those in the QCT that did not meet that ownership, those outside the QCT that did meet that ownership, and finally, those that were outside the QCT and did not meet the preferred ownership. The committee met to determine the best way to allocate the additional funding. And the allocation that the committee had suggested was that the original allocation would cover most, or substantial portion of bucket one. The additional allocation would provide enough funds to cover all of bucket one. So the committee is recommending that we fund the bucket one allocation at 100%, the bucket two allocation at 45%, the bucket four allocation would be at a flat amount of $800 unless the requested amount was less. All right, so it would be the lesser of $800 or the requested amount, and then bucket three would receive the remaining funds prorata. All right? So having said that, the allocation based on the qualified applications would be $1,645,835 to bucket one, $244,378, $380 to bucket two, $93,818 to bucket three, and $10,433 to bucket four. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
You said 100% to bucket one, right?
100% of the requested amount to the qualified applications.
And you said 400 to bucket, well, I guess total, I guess what it says, one total was 400% remaining? You said 100%.
100% of the requested amount.
You got that part. What was the 400?
That wasn't total that it took to round out that 100% on.
Well, you said the remaining funds was, I'm going, go back over that again.
Okay. The first bucket would be allocated $1,645,836, okay? The second bucket would be allocated $244,380. All right, now that's 40, that's, that's based on 45% of the request. All right, the third bucket, which would be the remaining funds after the other three buckets are satisfied, would be $93,818, and the fourth bucket would be $10,433.
So the figures changed from what you gave us here printed out the first time?
No ma'am.
On here, I see 938764 on the papers you gave us.
He just rounded it.
He just, he just rounded it.
He said 9388.
Only thing I'm saying is what you, I like what you say to me. If you give it to me in black and white, I want to see it in black and white.
Okay.
You gave me a figure here. I want the figure that you're telling me in this to match.
Okay, well the.
Damn it, you rounded it off. But I just said, if you gave me paperwork last week, and you gave me one amount, and now you're giving, nothing is totaling up to what you gave us previously.
Okay, the, the grand total should be $2 million.
I understand what you say. I see the $2 million, Councilman Howard, but I'm staying, what I saw, what I'm looking at here.
Will, will you read off your totals that you have without rounding it up?
Okay. The, to the big total should be $1,645,835.51, $2,444,379.83, $93,817.64. eight hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents, ten thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, one million nine hundred and ninety-four thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. There'd be postage of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, US press fees, which was the printing of the postcards, was nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-five cents. There was a three thousand dollar processing fee to the chamber for their assistance in, uh, reviewing the applications initially, and there's a dime worth of rounding.
So I'm kind of slow, but I just like everything to done, uh, in a way that if someone asks me this and it go out in the paper a different way, I want to be able to explain to them because I'm not, you know, I'm just to the point of, I, I like to entertain my citizens.
I, I understand.
That offended anyone, I apologize, but I represent my citizens.
Okay, well, I, I'll be glad to provide you a different breakdown if that's more, more useful.
Thank you.
And Chuck, in, in total, too, um, there was a duplicate there.
Also, it was a duplicate I brought up last.
We, we did correct that. Uh, it was, there was an Urban Bella boutique and an Urban Bella salon. So it actually was two separate businesses, but in reviewing it.
The names.
Uh, it was, it was very similar names because it was the same owner. So even though it was two separate businesses, uh, the same owner would not be eligible to put in two applications. Uh, so we removed the second one received, uh, which, and that money would then be allocated over the remaining, so it made forty something dollars difference, uh, to each qualified application in the third bucket.
Council, any further questions for Chuck?
I have, uh, one question, Chuck. Uh, what was your role in this? Were you, were you like on the committee? Were you advisor? Were you, what was your role in this?
Yes, Matt, well, I served, I guess, an ex officio member of the committee. Uh, so I was there for, uh, to kind of look at the rules and do the math.
You served the same role on the, um, nonprofits.
It's the same role as the nonprofit committee, that is correct. And, uh, we do have in the audience, uh, Christie and, uh, Dwayne.
That's Nick, that's Nick.
Nick, yeah, Dwayne's in the back there.
Yeah, there's Dwayne.
Uh, but, uh, Christie and Dwayne were our co-chairmen for the committee, uh, and they worked very hard on this, and I think they came up with a good allocation that spread the, uh, uh, money across the entire applicant pool while preserving the intent, excuse me, the intent of focusing on the qualified census tracts.
So the three thousand dollars goes to the chamber? So fifteen hundred don't go to Johnson and the other, if he was on it and the chamber was on it, all the three thousand dollars going directly to the chamber?
The, the three thousand dollars.
Johnson, he just worked free.
Well, now, the, the chamber, uh, was there to review the applications. So the chamber itself was not part of the committee.
But she's a part of the.
She is, she is part of the committee and she is part of the chamber, but the chamber itself, uh, was not an official committee member.
And this was agreed upon by the whole committee?
No, of the committee. Okay, I have a question because we asked this and, and we were told that the chamber was not going to get a fee, neither was the United Way. We were told they would not get a fee for doing this and they were going to be doing that, processing.
Correct. You, you asked them to advertise it so that everybody knew that the pot was out there and that's what they printed up? That's what we're paying them back for?
I thought that was US credit.
Correct.
I mean, I'm just asking because of the, like, this, I remember when we, in the words, those words were, no, the chamber would not get a fee for their service.
Right, well, the committee voted, uh, as part of the, the deliberations, uh, to put these fees in place because they wanted to do a public service.
So they went over, uh, what the cha, what the council had presented and said.
Is this just the reimbursement of the mailings and the postcards and the stamps and all that stuff?
But two of those items are just straight expenses, yes, sir. They're, they're reimbursements. Uh, the three thousand dollars is a fee paid to the chamber for a variety of things, including, uh, publicizing the event and, uh, reviewing the, uh, applications and that sort of thing and, and providing feedback to the applicants. Uh, that was a big difference here is they wanted everyone to have a chance to say, all right, this is what I'm turning in, does this meet the requirements? And we did have a large number of people take advantage of that.
You're talking about folks that set up meetings with them to come in and sit down and talk with them about what they're missing?
Well, what this was, was they turned in an application. The chamber reviewed it and made a list of what they were missing, and they gave it back to, uh, the applicant, so the applicant had a chance to correct those items that were either incorrect or missing.
Right.
If I can recall, I'm trying to think back, did we pay United Way when they sent previous money?
Uh, we, we did not get a bill from the United Way.
Well, in, in all fairness, the, A, again, the, the committee discussed this, but the work required to go through all of these applications, uh, I know for a fact that, uh, staff at the.
So you're saying the United Way didn't go through their applications, will be done with them?
I'm not here arguing on behalf of United Way.
United Way staff did not.
They did not go through.
I do know I was on that.
Chamber staff did.
And they had to turn their applications back in too, because I know several of them that I sat in on, they sent their applications back and they had to come back and redo it again. I was on that advisory meeting too also. I'm not upset with, I'm just speaking what, I want it in the public to know, we did not pay United Way and they'd sent back the same applications that were sent to them that Chuck and I sat in, and these people revised their applications and sent them back in later on and they had to revamp them again. Now we're saying that with chamber, because they, this is totally different per Councilman Tim Carroll, that this is different than what United Way done. I don't see this any difference because they did the same thing to some of the applicants. I just want this to be known because I'm going to vote for it because it's helping our citizens in the, in the city of Valdosta. But I just want you to know, we did not do fair to United Way.
Chuck, I just, I just have a question. I just want to make sure we all on the same page. Didn't our staff do that for the, um, nonprofits?
Well, we, we did intake for, yes, the, uh, United Way, the, the process for the nonprofit was slightly different, uh, because the nonprofits were looking at individual applications and deciding which, which nonprofit, uh, was doing the most good throughout the community. There was kind of a, I don't know, I said qualitative aspect to it, whereas with this, it was more about picking out rules as to how it was going to, uh, be divided. So there was no looking at an individual application, uh, to decide, uh, is this the type of thing we want to do? It was just, does this application meet this set of rules?
Just, just another point of clarity, too. It was not the United Way. It was the committee. So United Way had a person that was represented on there, but it was.
I, I, I'm not, I, I'm not done. How many applications did we have for nonprofits?
I cannot remember off the top of my head, but there, there was a fraction of what we had for the.
I want to say, I want, I want to say around a hundred.
How many did we have for the small businesses?
We had two hundred and thirty-four small business applications.
Any further questions for Chuck on this matter?
One just small question, but were all applications that were submitted, was all of them, were kind of like, I know they said they had to stamp them in, was all of them kind of included in this two hundred and thirty-four, every one that was brought in?
Are you talking about small business applications? But right, this is, these are the ones that were stamped and brought in. These are all the ones received, uh, within the window.
Okay.
So we did, we did have a few that were turned in after the fact, but we had two hundred and thirty-four to consider.
Any further questions for Chuck? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Good luck, Ben.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the recipients of this, of these monies, and, um, just, uh, express my appreciation on the committee, for the committee members and the job that they did. This was monumental. I'm sure that it was. Um, but if the list is reviewed, it is incredible, the diversity of, of businesses that will benefit from this, these, these monies, and I appreciate that greatly. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve this allocation recommended by the committee.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? Um, council, be proud of yourselves, too, for that, that dual allocation, truly. All right, motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. In opposition, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you again for your work.
Thanks, guys. Christmas is coming to small businesses in Valdosta.
Mark, when would those distributions start going at?
Uh, the, I'm anxious folk, county folks will have to collect some information. We tried to collect as much of it upfront on the application so it can be a pretty quick process, but once they get the right federal numbers and things like that, it won't take them long at all.
You wanted by Christmas?
No, I just wanted to know for the people who are listening there know when they could start expecting their money.
Oh, I know that they were in the, they, they were in the census.
Council, item B, consideration of a request to abandon a stormwater easement located in the undeveloped property north of twenty-five seventeen Forestwood Drive. Ben O'Dowd, our sitting engineer, to present. Hi, Ben.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll, I'll start with, God. Um, I'll start with a little bit of background on this. Uh, the applicant was Tony Barker and, uh, they petitioned the city to abandon an existing stormwater easement, which is located on the currently undeveloped property in question. Um, it's a grass lot. Uh, they have interest in developing housing on this lot. If you'll turn to the map that I've included in the package. There we go. You can see there, uh, the site is gutted by a twenty-foot, uh, stormwater drainage easement. If you know anything about stormwater drainage easements, uh, you're not permitted to build houses on, top of, or near them, um, because we have to maintain access to that easement in order to maintain and repair stormwater infrastructure if needed. Um, the request to abandon this easement was circulated to all city departments as well as utility companies. There is no existing infrastructure inside of this easement of any kind. The city does not have any interest or need, there is no public need for stormwater infrastructure in this easement. If you look at the site, the upper left-hand corner is the low corner of the site. There is no need for conveyance in this, uh, format here. And so with that, the engineering department recommends, uh, the abandonment of this stormwater easement, and I'm here to take any questions that you may have.
Council, questions for Ben? Ben, thank you. Stay put. Council, it's yours for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve your request presented by Mr..
Be quiet tonight.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Ben, item C, consideration of a request to abandon a portion of public right-of-way adjacent to the six fourteen Justin Drive location.
Yes, sir. Similarly, this is a request, uh, the applicant, Madison Reed, petitioned for the city to abandon an existing portion of public right-of-way adjacent to six one four Justin Drive. I've attached a survey, a preliminary survey of the site as well as an aerial exhibit to kind of talk around. The, in the initial phase of this development, developers oftentimes leave stubouts or, uh, points for future access or interconnection for future phases of residential development. As you know, um, and as you can see in the aerial image that I've also attached in your packet, uh, this is the area, uh, right next to the Publix Grocery Store. There is no need for or desire for any future interconnection there. There's significant grade change between this neighborhood, it's much higher than the Publix Grocery, that's also the Publix Grocery Truck loading dock, so there's no substantial need or, or meaningful need to interconnect there at any, um, time in the future. Uh, we circulated all of, uh, we circulated this right-of-way abandonment request, all of the different utilities departments as well as city departments, um, and the only, um, utility that we have located on this property is a stormwater pipe. And for that reason, I am recommending, uh, that we retain a twenty-foot stormwater easement over top of that stormwater pipe. The owner has been, or the adjacent owner is aware that he's not allowed to build any structures on top of the stormwater pipe, um, and that any temporary structures that he puts over top of it, like a fence, he does so at his own risk. And if we have to get in there and repair it, then we have to remove that fence, uh, at a later date. So that is a term that I'm recommending, and the engineering department recommends that we abandon this portion, the depicted portion of the right-of-way, um, with the condition that we retain a twenty-foot stormwater easement over top of the existing pipe.
Any further questions for Ben? Ben, thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you, council. We'll move on to item D, consideration of a request for replacement of aging and deteriorating sluice gates at the Mud Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. Bradley Iyer, Director of Utilities, come up for the second time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, this agenda item, uh, is a consideration request to replace, uh, aging and deteriorating sluice gates at the Mud Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. And these are basically just slide gates. Um, you can see a picture there, some pictures that we've included, uh, that, that operate to control the flow between the, uh, influence basins. We anticipated having to replace these and had budgeted, uh, for the fiscal year twenty-three, um, an item, figure five hundred thousand dollars to have a contractor, uh, replace these. Um, we, we've got a sole source company, Rodney Hunt and Company. Because we're just doing a one-for-one replacement, uh, using the same gate, uh, model, uh, we'll have a stainless steel gate instead of a aluminum gate. However, we'll have our own, uh, maintenance crews replace the gates, uh, at a significant cost savings, uh, the amount of one forty-seven, eight ninety, one hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, uh, for, for the eleven gates to replace them. Uh, the life expectancy of these gates are, uh, ten to fifteen years. We've gotten fourteen and a half years, uh, use out of these gates, so, uh, I recommend that we, that we authorize the approval, uh, sole source purchase of these eleven gates for the East Train Eration Basin, the amount of one forty-seven, eight hundred and ninety dollars to Rodney Hunt and Company. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions for Bradley? Bradley, thank you. Council, it's yours for action.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the bid.
Second.
As presented.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item seven. Boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. We'll start with the Community Development Block Grant Citizens Advisory Committee. Wendellin Hodges resigned in twenty-twenty-one due to personal reasons. Her term was set to expire February twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-three. This appointment was advertised according to our boards and commissions' policies. The only applicant was Ms. Hodges again, stepping back up. Her application's attached for your review, and council, without objections, since she's the lone applicant, I will, I will appoint Ms. Hodges by acclamation. The second is the, uh, consideration of an appointment to the Greater Lounes Planning Commission. It has a member, Robert Jefferson, whose term expires November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The appointment was advertised according to our policy as well. Um, the only applicant was Robert, Robert Blythewood, I thought. It says Blythewood on here. And again, he's the only applicant, and I'd like to, uh, also do a little subtext and thank Robert Jefferson for his many, many years.
Lord, yes.
Of service on that board. I went before him twenty years ago. He was on there.
When I served, within my head hair, and it was dark.
So again, council, if no objections, um, we'll appoint, um, Mr. Blythewood by acclamation. Thank you. All right. Item C, consideration of an appointment to the Valdosta Housing Authority. Valdosta Housing Authority has a member, Deborah White, whose term will expire December thirty-first of this year. Ms. White's expressed interest in being reappointed. Appointment was advertised according to our policies. Listed below are the applicants in no order of preference. The applicants are attached for your review. There were two, again, Ms. White and Beth Hawn, a real estate agent. Um, this is my mayor's appointment, and where that, uh, authority is heading in the near future, I think her real estate expertise will be invaluable. So with that, I appoint Ms. Hawn to that post. And there is one final one. Consideration of. And there is one final one, consideration of an appointment to the Valdosta Tree Commission. Again, Jacob Eckwall, term expires September sixth of twenty-twenty-two, has expressed an interest in being reappointed, um, and without objection, Mr. Eckwall's is the only application, um, and we'll do it by acclamation, if that's all right. Counsel, thank you. We'll now move on to citizens to be heard. The citizens-to-be-heard portion of the meeting, this is where I ask you to come forward, state your name and address so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to Counsel as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of Counsel in debate. It's the Counsel's policy to follow through with you and, and your concern, most of the time immediately. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address Counsel appoint one spokesperson so that others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard? Please state your name and address.
I do, Your Honor, I'm Charles Powers. I live at four-two-seven Georgetown Circle. I'm here today to ask the city's help to, uh, move up the repaving, repaving schedule for Windermere Street and Georgetown Circle. Windermere Street, um, starts at Eagle Road and goes down approximately two thousand feet, on the west side is Langdale Place, east side is First Federal. And the street was, uh, put in by the Langdale Company when they developed Langdale Place in nineteen-eighty-nine. It has a low-traffic inverted curb, uh, design, and, and that means it's designed like this, inverted curb or reverse curb. All streets basically are top-crown, which will flow five degrees or so into gutter and run out to catch basins. Uh, what happens with this type street is that it takes the majority of the water right straight down the center of the street, and this undermines that center joint, which is very hard to pave, and after, the street now is thirty-two years old, and it absolutely has deteriorated from the center. Uh, we have at present, uh, streets are about twenty-thousand, two thousand feet, Langdale Place, uh, uses that as an entrance, and the three-hundred-bed nursing home has, uh, a, a large, large group of cars coming in every day, and also, um, I developed in nineteen-ninety, right after subdivision, uh, Langdale was built, Georgetown subdivision, and we put in forty homes there, uh, really nice homes, and they, uh, use that as an entrance also. In the meantime, the Langdale Company sold to the east about nine big buildings that, uh, ranged from accounting firms to insurance...
Your time's up, but they're very much aware, and if you'll stay to the end of the meeting, um, Ben O'Dowd and Mark Barber will approach you at, at the end of that meeting. That is a, a bad stretch of road, absolutely.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll close out that portion and turn it over to Mark Barber for city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to remind everybody, December second at six P.M., at Beautiful Unity Park, we'll have our tree lighting ceremony jointly held with, with Lounges County. Uh, I think you're going to be happy with all the plans that, that we have made, um... Hold on, Ben, will you go with Mr. Powers? Thank you, Ben. Uh, so that's Friday, that's Friday, December the second. The program will probably last a little bit longer than you're used to, because we've added some special events in there, uh, so looking forward to that. Then on December third, another popular event that we've had over the last few years is our children's craft, and we'll be doing those crafts, those Christmas crafts with our children, also in Unity Park, and then, uh, also December third, six P.M. is our, uh, our Christmas parade, and we've got the float for all you guys to be on, on however you want to do it, and, uh, so that's exciting. And then, in front of your desk tonight, you have a report from Redspeed, and if you guys remember, that is the company that we were interested in, looking at our schools own and collecting data for, versus forest speeding and things of that nature, so, some good, we, we tried to do it last meeting, but we just didn't get the information in time to get it, you could review it last week, but it's before you to review and ask questions, uh, put a memo on, with it as well, hoping maybe you guys can talk about it and reach a consensus so we can maybe do everything at one point in time, so be ready to go at the beginning of the year. But great information in there, and as you review it, please let me know if you have any questions. Greg Parks, Red, Redspeed Representative, happy, will be happy to come and ask, answer any questions you may have. And that concludes my comments, Mayor.
Mark, thank you, and I recommend talking to that group, they really have their act together, they truly do, um, and obviously have worked with many communities around Georgia and, and even the nation as well. Are there any counsel comments tonight?
Mister Mayor, we failed to thank someone during the ARPA discussion, and that was Crystal McGinn, in the accounting department. Uh, she did a super job, um, keeping on, staying on top of things and getting reports out to the committee. Uh, I'm, I know that, um, if everyone knew how much work she put into it, they would appreciate it, and I just wanted to make sure we included her in that thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
One.
Please.
I want to thank each one of you guys for, um, allowing us to do this for these small businesses, because a lot of these small businesses are still hurting, and Mark, thank you, too, because that was one of y'all, your ideas when we got up with this retreat on some of our ARPA money, we didn't have to do it, but there's some ideas that we, as Counsel and Mayor thought would help some of our citizens, and so again, I want to thank y'all for allowing us to do that, to help some of the people in our community.
And I'll close it out by saying I couldn't be more proud, Eric, well, well said. That's exactly what that money was earmarked for, that's exactly how it's, it's done the most good, so...
Amen.
Thank you all. Senior member?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh...
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff.